It is six oh five and I'm calling the Select Board meeting of June twenty second to order. This is a hybrid meeting, present in person are Jane Nevins Smith, Doris Changeloud, Molly Keegan. Remotely we have our advisor, Karen Parsons. And Carolyn Brannan. And what starts with the consent agenda? Why not like this because I can't get on the board docs? I want to do board docs, I don't want to be answering. So.
Do you want to raise this consent agenda, Jennifer?
Yes. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have warrants AP two two five one, AP two two five one S, PR two 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 six, resignation from the Committee for Diversity Equity and Intention for D E I. And one day liquor license for Leadfoot Brewing, July second, July third, July tenth, July thirtieth, and July thirty first.
Yes. I would like to remove that from the consent agenda, please, the liquor license.
All right. I'd like a motion that we approve the NASS and accept the resignation of Kayla Worland from the D E I committee. I might also like to thank Kayla for her service as a volunteer for the committee.
Second, third, Doris. Roll call vote, please, Jennifer.
Roll call vote Nevins Smith?
Yes.
Changeloud?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the one day liquor license, Randy, you have questions on that?
Well, again, I don't believe that that should be on the consent agenda. It's something that, as an example, I was at Maple Valley Creamery on Father's Day, and there was Leadfoot Brewery, or whatever they're called, Leadfoot Brewing was there, and I had no idea that they had a license. And I talked to Jane about it earlier, and she told me that we voted on it on May eighteenth in the part of the consent agenda, and I completely forgot about it. So I just think something like this is better to get out so that we can at least talk about it for a little bit, so that, again, not only us, but the public is aware of what's going on.
All right, well, Patrick Brandle is here for Leadfoot Brewing. Would you like to speak, Patrick?
Sure. I'll answer any questions, Jeff.
Did you have questions, Randy?
Pardon me?
Have questions for him, who's asking?
Oh, no, no, I have no questions. I understand what's going on. I have no issue with the license itself. I just want it out in public. Let people know that, again, we don't just issue these licenses willy-nilly. There's a process that we go through.
Well, I'll just, I'll jump in right here for you. The reason we've always typically had them on a consent agenda is because before y'all, before they get to y'all, I have the building inspector, the fire chief, and the police chief review all of them, sign off, and put any conditions upon them that they have. And at that point, they get put on the consent agenda because if Tommy, Mike, and Mike don't have any issues, it's seen as a non-controversial item, and that's why they've been on the consent agenda in the past.
Okay, I understand that, but again, the public doesn't know the process. And even if there's a little blurb as to how it goes, it takes an extra five or 10 seconds of the chair's time to explain that, I would be ecstatic.
Okay.
So we had already approved it at one of our previous meetings, and we knew it was coming. They're here tonight just to accept it. I don't feel like we need to take it off as a consent agenda, as in other things that are around the consent agenda. If we feel we need a discussion, we can have them, but I don't feel on every liquor license because we come across this every time that UMass football starts their season, and they ask us for numerous licenses, one day licenses for their functions over there. And the public is quite aware of this, and the same thing with having a one day liquor license. It's really not anything that the public is not aware of at this point.
So, Randy is asking, let me clarify. You would like to see this simply as an agenda item rather than buried in consent? And there may or may not be any discussion once it is on the agenda. You will vote on it there instead of in buried in consent?
Being, being new to this process, and, 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 I mean, if you guys can convince me that it doesn't make any sense for me to keep doing this, I will consent, if you will. I, I just don't know how it gets out into the public. And one of the things that I was concerned with when I ran was that the public be aware of what happens at our meetings. So that's my concern. If there's a way that we can appease me, then we can keep it on the consent agenda.
You're one of those five, though, and I don't think that that's really necessary. I, I just, there's a lot of things on the consent agenda that are there because there are people that see it before us.
Mm-hmm.
There, I don't feel like there's any reason for it.
I understand that, but we are working for the townspeople, and I want the townspeople to know what's happening.
So, Randy, I was on the board when we made the recommendation to put these types of items on. And the reason we did it, aside from the reasons that were already stated, is the Select Board knows that if, in order for it to get here, it already had to go through a process of being reviewed by multiple department heads, including the licensing coordinator. And because they come up with such a high degree of frequency, the concern was that we were spending too much time talking about things that were effectively, I'm going to call it perfunctory, and not spending enough time talking about some of the other agenda items, which require, you know, maybe a little bit more weight in conversation. So, and I think the fact that it's not really being buried because Jane actually, or the chair, will read all of the items on the consent agenda. So anybody watching the meeting would know that Leadfoot is here tonight for these licenses. So, you know, personally, I'm fine leaving them on the consent agenda, and I think, I think as time wears on, we're going to find out that these are on over and over and over.
Okay, well, as I, as I said, if you can, if you can convince me that I'm wasting everybody's time, I'll be happy to stop.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to keep it on the consent agenda.
Well, it's already, it's already off for tonight, Joyce.
I know that, but I'm saying for future things, if it has already gone through the licensing board, and everybody has signed off on it, I am making a motion that it remain on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Indefinitely.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, buddy. More discussion? Jennifer, roll call, please.
Okay, roll call vote Nevins Smith?
Yes.
Changeloud?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the one day liquor license for the dates already read by the chair for Leadfoot.
Second. We have a motion, and a second, third, Doris. Any further discussion? Jennifer?
Roll call vote Nevins Smith?
Yes.
Changeloud?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. I will have your licenses ready for you on Friday.
Unfortunately, you were the example tonight.
That's okay. No problem.
Thanks for seeing me, thank you very much.
Have a good venue.
All right, it's time for public comments. Please make your public comments three minutes or less, and to under advisement that we will listen to you, but we will not discuss the same. Anybody here for public comment?
Does it look like anybody else is raising their hand?
Thank you for checking that. All right, moving into old business. We see there are that we have Bobby here.
Do you want me to use a microphone, Jennifer?
Is it on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm Bobby Caiman, I'm chairperson.
Let's see, there was a little bit. Get you, save the case, we love sort of hours, looking at it. Let's see, there was a little bit.
I'm going to stop now.
I can't hear her.
How about now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Bobby Caiman, I'm chairperson of the mosquito opt-out committee, which was appointed last fall by the Select Board in response to the town's vote to opt-out a spring for mosquitoes. And I'm here tonight to report and to share with you the lead-up approval from the State of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, today there was an Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Madam Chair, may I agree with that? Okay, to whom it may concern, National law, chapter two five two, section two A B two, allows a municipality to apply to opt-out of mosquito control spring conducted by the State Reclamation and mosquito control board, SRMCD. For the SRMCD to recognize a municipal opt-out, the municipality must have an alternative mosquito management plan application approved by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, E E A. Accordingly, E E A reviewed your municipality's application, including your regional risk determination, alternative mosquito management plan, certified vote, and checklist. Municipal regional level determination served as E E A's guiding criteria in 2022 municipal opt-out applications. Regional risk levels were determined using historical risk level indicators, including the presence of local and regional suitable mosquito habitat and local and regional incidences of positive E E E testers, examples of mosquito samples, animals, and humans. Your municipality was determined to be low regional risk. Given that your municipality prepared an alternative mosquito management plan with specified mosquito control education outreach activities for residents, and submitted a certified vote, your application to opt-out of SRMCD spring has been approved. This will be shared with the SRMCD in order to recognize the opt-out under statute. Finally, when executing your plan, please bear in mind approval of this plan does not relieve an applicant of the need to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local statutes ordinances by those regulations. Further, the municipality's opt-out does not extend to state-owned land within your municipality's borders. Finally, public health outcomes are driven in part by local mosquito control actions. We encourage you to review the attached mosquito control resources to support in implementing best practices throughout the rest of the season. And there is a list, I looked at all, and basically state resources that many of them do not apply to us, but there are many resources. This, this approval does apply to the calendar year 2022. And that's, and this is signed by Bethany A. Card, Secretary of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Thank you, Bobby, and thank your committee for all the work they did on it. Our pleasure, and thank you, Jane. And also, I want to thank Susan Mosler from the Board Health for their support, too. Thank you. Any questions? And now, we move on. On the next behalf of the, the next approval for the APR, the Select Board was asked to approve the coholder agreement. This was approved by May twenty-second annual town meeting, and this is the final step as the coholders are due to see. The same, I just want to clear this up, we need to vote on them separately, but same is true for the Hendrich APR. Then questions?
Motion to accept the APR payout to the APR and to the Hendrich APR.
Can you make them separate?
This is first, so, motion, Doris?
Second.
Of the coholder agreement, yes, great. One second?
Yes.
Sitting by my mom, she's closer.
Sorry, you tickled me. Roll call vote Nevins Smith?
Yes.
Changeloud?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now, I will make a motion for the Hendrich APR, motion to accept the Hendrich APR. Doris moved?
Second.
Second.
Second, by Randy. Roll call, please, Jennifer.
Roll call vote Nevins Smith?
Yes.
Changeloud? Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Okay, I need you all to come to Town Hall for your signatures to be notarized for both of these, please.
Okay, I can't be there until next week, Jennifer.
As soon as you could, would be great, please.
Yeah, it'd be Monday.
Okay, I'll see you Monday.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I got four point four, the West Street Commons park. So, this was sort of talked about last week during our meeting, weeks ago, and it's come up to have a discussion. There are, in the, in the town laws, the town guidelines, I guess, in the Select Board page, application for use of the historic common. It's a two-page document, which was voted in by the Select Board in 2018. It was presented by the Historical Commission in terms of trying to keep the common in its historical use. So, there are lots of different areas of this common that's used. There's the personal use of the residence on West Street. There's the caving on use by the town, for instance, the Memorial Day Parade. And then there are people who want to use it for events as the, it's fair to discuss it. So, in a short period, I think we need to talk about all of those, and then, on a longer time, figure out if we need to make any changes to it. So, I'm hoping this for discussion.
I think part of this that was brought up is because people were avoiding using the parker signs over toward Esalen, and they were parking on the other side of West Street Common and walking across, so that now they're, they parked on the other side of the common to avoid parking in the parking lot at Esalen. And so, the officers have asked that, you know, maybe we should put signs up on all four corners, just to say no parking towards the nine. I think that was their concern, is that you still have people that would have struck you if you allowed them to park on, on either side. We don't have as much of a problem on the north side as we do on the south side. I think that's where this parking thing came along, is people were concerned about, you know, the parking along that area there. See, I think there was about nine cars towed of recent, or tickets were given, that were parked illegally near the Esalen business.
See, that, those are, those are two separate issues, so, the use of the town common, like, that's the document of the historical, right, yeah. I mean, personally, I mean, it's a town common, so, I think, you know, I would default to the original intent, is that it's a public gathering space. And I would love to see it used as much as it reasonably can be, you know, without causing destruction to the West Street neighborhood. And then, it seems like the, well, parking issues are separate. Separate issue, I'm sorry. Thinking about that, Jennifer.
I wasn't, when I think I brought it up, I wasn't necessarily bringing up the use of the town common, because that has been historically one thing to be, prime in the fall, they usually used the common at that point.
I did have a random question, and I guess in regards to the use of the commons, because I know that we had the Asparagus Festival, and we have other events going on there that we approve. And I was wondering, though, because I know that people will park on the side of it and could cause destruction to it with vehicles loading, unloading, or whatever. Do we have any way of, you know, when we approve a contract or a permit, per se, that, that we do hold those outside entities, organizations, or anybody accountable? Because I know the DPW does a lot of work, but I don't, I'm not entirely sure that it should be their responsibility when we do have events from outside entities coming in. Is that something that we can put in any agreements that we have?
One of the things that's in the application for use of the common is parking slash transportation plans. So there's a section they have to fill out about what they plan to do for parking specifically. And they also pay, everyone pays, regardless of whether it's a nonprofit or resident or for-profit, they pay the $500 security deposit, so that if there's damage done to the common by parking or whatever, the town will keep that deposit.
And then we would bill them for anything over that $500, should there be any serious issues?
Jennifer?
We also have people carry insurance on our property when they do it to the Asparagus Festival. I think it's a million dollars aggregate, and we also make them carry an auto liability as well. So we do have people carrying insurance on our property for damage, if there's anything in addition to. And, so, that is in place. As I understand, the $500 deposit is not super great. We did have to collect it a couple of years ago, where someone had damaged the commons with their tires, and the DPW went out, assessed it, and said that it would take a few bags of the special grass, whatever it's called, the special grass they use on the commons. And so, we ended up, I think it was, we kept like $280 from the individual to pay for the grass seed to repair the, the damage that was done. So we have assessed fees and used that in the past. So, that, that's where we are historically.
Okay, thank you. Jane, can I have?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Can you hear Carolyn?
Can you hear me?
Me?
Very well.
No, not very well.
It's on, so I can push it again.
So?
Push it all the time?
Okay.
There we go.
I can probably help with that, and I apologize, I couldn't, I didn't have the language like this, so, just a second. So, I, I actually put that on the agenda to be addressed, because I'll wait within a two or three week period, I have these complaints, not a separate issue from using the commons. The issue was parking on the commons alongside the commons, actually using it as personal additional parking space, so not parking parallel to it, but literally pulling in and parking on there, complaints from various entities, as well as concerns about usage of larger vehicles going across the commons. So, having asked for it to go to Project Coordinator Coordination Committee, I think there was a lot of discussion, and probably is not going to get solved in one night. My recommendation might be to, the bylaw committee review is meeting, is having its first meeting on Tuesday. This might be a good place, we probably won't have an answer for several months, but that might be the best place. I think what I learned was just from feedback from the committee, Project Coordination Committee, and this discussion, it is just so many different entities. But just to be clarification, it wasn't regarding usage of what, which we're talking about right now, so.
Well, I think it's a good thing that we're talking about it and being aware of it, but I don't think we need to make any kind of decision, we just need to keep our eye on the future.
Well, I, I think that-
Yeah, I mean, like, for the Asparagus Festival, people were parked on it, and there was trucks parked on it. And, you know, that's what I saw. I mean, they were actually having additional parking right there on the commons.
Yeah, that's typical for any big event that we have on the common. It's, parking is everywhere, the Memorial Day Parade, the people park on the common. I don't think it's a big deal if it's not abused, meaning used every day kind of thing. Excuse me. And if we want to prevent people from parking on the common, the only way we're going to stop it is to put a fence up around the whole thing, because I sat at Primo the other day, looked across the common, and two people pulled right up to the signs that say no parking, and parked their cars and got out. So, they just don't seem to care.
Can you make us also on? Mike? Do you want to speak to this, Mike Mason?
Yep. Do you have a question about that, or what we talked about at the project coordination meeting? So, what we, what we discussed at that meeting was basically that, you know, this, it's really up to the Select Board. The reasons that they put the no parking signs up there was because of damage to the commons, not because of, you know, people not wanting people to be able to use the common. And so, really what it comes down to is, is you can put up any, any kind of sign you want as the board and, and decide, you know, whatever you want them to say. The, the only thing that I would tell you is that, as far as enforcement goes, you know, the way that the parking rules that, that Jane, you know, brought up at the beginning of this, read, basically say something along the lines of, you know, can't park there regularly. I don't know how, you know, our department would be able to find out who's parking there regularly. We're not going to, you know, take pictures of cars and find out how many days a week they're parking there before we ticket them. So it's either all or nothing. It has to be no parking, or you have to allow it. Or you can allow it just for specific events, really, you know, it's, it's completely your pleasure. And, you know, the discussion that Molly and Joyce were having earlier, I believe, was two separate discussions. The only thing that I would be concerned about is where, you know, how far up they go towards Route Nine. That will be a concern for me, so you have, you know, so you, you can see to pull out.
But, to safety in terms of visibility for corners?
Yeah. Yep, that's all that would be. As far as parking on the common, I, I have no, no opinion on it. The reason that, the only thing that I was able to tell Carolyn about it when she mentioned that she had been getting complaints was that there was a day that, last week, or a couple of days, where they sighted several vehicles, and actually, I think towed two. And the lieutenant thought it was quite funny that as he was working his way up the line of cars writing tickets, someone who was parked there saw him, ran out to their car, and just simply drove around to the other side of the common and parked where there was no, no parking signs. But, you know, there's nothing you can do about that. And there's no damage on that side of the common, so I guess there's no concern.
Right, I think that the whole issue started with the consist, continuous that was happening on the side of the common near Esalen. It causes to, now Esalen has added a second lot, so they have a much larger parking area for their customers. So, choosing the issue.
Well, the other problem, too, in posting the signs, is that the bus was having an issue with site pulling in and out of West Street on that site. So that was, that was the big concern, was the bus not having visibility with the cars parked there.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that when this issue did first arise a few weeks back, I actually did take the time to speak with a couple of folks who live, you know, on or very near the common, and several of them had the exact opposite opinion in that- And several of them have the exact opposite opinion in that, you know, nope, there should be no parking signs up at all. The common should be for everyone and they want to see people pulling up and parking and using it for whatever they want to use it for, playing frisbee or, you know, playing catch with their kids or something. So, you know, just, there's two sides to every coin.
I believe that it's been a long time, I used to own the property all the time. And I believe that my deed said that I had access to the common because that was the original layout of the land, that all the properties around the common could use it for their common grazing. And now my horse has changed to a car and I'm grazing my car on the common by parking. All right, so let's, is it already to be along? We're going to take the questions and move along. All right, moving along.
Hi.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. It's so exciting to be at your first hybrid meeting, all the technology.
And then you can just run it from there, just normal, you're up on the next floor.
All right, am I on this mic?
Randy, could you confirm, can you hear Laura?
Randy?
Yes, I can.
You don't need a mic then.
Okay, great. Hello, everybody, glad to be with you again. I had come to the select board, I believe it was in April, to give kind of a first overview of a proposed redevelopment of the Econo Lodge. I know there are several new board members here and we've advanced our plans a little bit. So it seemed timely to come back and see if there's questions. So I'm going to share a little bit of an online presentation and then happy to take your questions. So the scope that we've been thinking of for the building, there are 63 hotel rooms, double rooms in the building, is to kind of downsize the density a bit to create 51 permanent supportive apartments, 50 for tenants and one for a live-in resident manager. Essentially, the site would not change. The Econo Lodge sign would be gone, but otherwise we don't see that there's much need to tinker with the site. We would combine 24 existing single rooms to create 12 one-bedroom units having kitchens. And then we would convert 39 existing rooms to 39 studios by adding kitchens to those rooms. All the rooms currently have full bathrooms. We would hope to have budget to add solar panels on the main hotel roof and the storage facility roof. This is tiny. This is the existing site plan from the original permitting for this project. So this building was constructed, I believe, in 2003, so it's a relatively new building, about 20 years old. And you're looking at the plans, I guess kind of the point of this is that this property in its development, as the Econo Lodge already went through a full site plan review process with your planning board. This is a sample floor plan, I believe this is the second floor. It's pretty repetitive in terms of how the rooms are laid out, as hotels are. So you can see that the rooms, as they exist now, they kind of jigsaw puzzle one into the other. Bathrooms are back to back. And then down below is showing a proposal to take some of those rooms kind of scattered randomly and combine them to create a one-bedroom apartments. This is looking at what a studio apartment might look like. And they are approximately 257 square feet, so this is a very compact living space. But you can see the existing bathrooms and the rest of the room is kind of a big rectangle. You can see some little kitchen appliances and things are brought in. And this is just giving some samples of how one might lay out furniture in a space of this size. And, oops, to go back.
Well, back. Not doing this.
Sorry about that. These are showing, again, the same kind of exercise with the architect. Typical one-bedroom configuration, essentially creating an adjoining room, adjoining doorway between two next-door hotel rooms, taking out one bathroom, creating a kitchen in that area, kind of reusing the plumbing that's there, leaving one bathroom, creating one bedroom, and then kind of a kitchen, living, dining space. And these would be approximately 514 square feet. There are existing accessible units in this building which would be retained as accessible. The common areas, I don't know how many folks have been in this building. The largest rectangle that you see now contains a pool. We would not want to have a pool due to liability and maintenance concerns. So we would anticipate filling it in to create kind of a large multipurpose flex space. Same thing, the lobby would be for common area. And then there are several offices that we would use either for staff offices or for, we're looking at having a little bit of classroom space, kind of place where people can access digital technology who might not otherwise be able to afford it. There is a commercial laundry space hotel that we would convert to a shared laundry room for tenants. And there is kind of nice wifi existing throughout the building, which we would maintain for tenants. Okay, again, decreasing overall density from 63 rooms to 51 apartments, primarily housing single adults or couples. Targeting 25 apartments to very low-income tenants, including a preference for people who are unhoused. And those folks would pay 30% of their income toward rent. 25 apartments for moderate-income tenants up to 60% of the area median income, who would pay a fixed rent but a below-market rent. One resident manager unit and that person would not have an income cap. And then just to give you a sense of who might fit into these income guidelines, we're showing the caps as they stand today for 30% and 60% of the area median income for one person and two people. 30% units we find in our experience are suitable for retirees, part-time workers, and persons with disabilities. 60% units also might house retirees, but often full-time low-wage workers or other kinds of part-time workers. In terms of staffing, we are contemplating one live-in manager, a full-time resident services coordinator, a full-time property manager, part-time maintenance staff, and an on-call overnight crisis service. The support systems that we would want to make available to tenants include these three main areas. Educational and vocational advancement, mental health services, and helping people basically become more financially successful or more financially self-sufficient. In terms of that educational vocational component, we want to have a remote classroom. We want to have study rooms where people can study at one of our many local colleges using remote technology. We intend to have a scholarship fund for tenants in need to be able to advance their education. Tutors available, ESL classes, which is English as a second language, help from the literacy project, and various other types of vocational training in place. In terms of mental health, we would look to have support groups, one-on-one counseling, case management, and other types of whatever you need kind of skills for folks who are moving from a less stable situation trying to get to a more stable situation. In terms of economic stability, we are already equipped to provide onsite or to provide staff for budgeting and financial management. We have a whole kind of small business technical assistance part of Valley, and we would provide tax consulting services as well for self-employed and gig workers. Zoning is an issue that we've talked about quite a bit with the various boards in town. Folks may or may not recall that we're really looking at two primary zoning paths. One is called Chapter 40A, which is usually used for educational uses. And one is called 40B, which is pretty exclusive to the creation of affordable housing. I worked with Bill Dwyer, who I think is with us tonight, who was extremely patient and helpful, looking at these two options, and also consulted with the town attorney. 40A is the quicker path. It's a little more circumscribed in terms of its definition. The town attorney did not feel totally confident that this was the right zoning path for this project. And so I believe we've come to a mutual understanding, and interested to hear if people have opinions on this, that we should follow a Chapter 40B zoning path. It is a longer path and I will tell you what it entails. One thing it entails is it allows the developer to request waivers from any local bylaws and regulations, which we do through the zoning board of appeals. In this case, the big-ticket waiver is to allow a residential use in an industrial zone. Otherwise, there's not a lot of waivers needed because it is an existing use. We're not changing the exterior, we're not changing the site. The 40B process, Valley, our agency seeks what's called a project eligibility letter from a state housing finance agency. And here's where you come in, it's very helpful to include a letter of support from the municipality. So we'd love to talk with you folks about your comfort level, providing such a letter. The state agency would come onsite, they would look at the site, they would review our proposal. They would formally give the municipality a 30-day comment period, where anybody could say anything that they have to say about this proposed project. If the state issues it, then it's kind of one of the thresholds we need to meet to apply through the zoning board of appeals under Chapter 40B. And then it's pretty much a negotiated process between the developer and the zoning board of appeals as to what are the nitty-gritties. They can put almost anything into that decision, but usually it's by mutual agreement between the parties. Our best-case timeline would be to apply for this project eligibility letter next month, to apply for funds, loan funds, to acquire the property in September, to hopefully receive this project eligibility letter from the state sometime around October, to actually acquire the property in November, to have zoning hearings and reviews taking place from December through next spring, have a decision sometime next spring, and then seek state financing. And then, you know, depending on how quickly they can move, close on that financing, we're probably looking at about a six-month renovation to the building and then being able to open and lease up the property. We will be required to do pretty extensive affirmative fair marketing for anything that has public money. So getting the word out to anybody who might be qualified or eligible. And that's me, and eager to hear if people have questions.
I have a few questions. And so is this project intended mostly to be as a way for people that are homeless or low-income to get back on their feet?
That is one of the major goals of the project. I think I would say the other kind of equally important goal for us is kind of workforce housing. So looking at the folks who might be employed in the kind of commercial Route 9 area to have affordable housing.
And then my other question, as you had indicated that there was vocational offerings, mental health offerings, economic stability offerings for educational purposes, are those required for people to live there?
They are not required. So, and it's, the state's pretty firm on this point. You can't take people's housing away if they don't participate in a program. So all the programming is voluntary. You hope if you offer good and appropriate programming that people will take advantage of it.
So then would you deny people the opportunity to live there on the grounds? So you're saying that you can't take it away from them, but then would you not give it to them in the first place if they're not willing to do that?
Not give the housing to them or the services?
Yeah, I mean, because they would, they applied to live there, right?
Right. So people have the right to housing whether or not-
Right, but they have to apply to live there and you have to accept them as an applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
So then if they're not willing or not willing to sign anything saying that they would better themselves as an opportunity to remove themselves from their situation, why would you let them in in the first place?
Right. So we think that people are likely to be able to better themselves if they're housed. So we want to give everybody housing. We think that's kind of a launch point to be able to partake of other types of self-improvement activities. But the state is, housing is a protected right, basically. So unless someone's breaking their lease, we're not going to be evicting them. And their lease is not able to include a requirement that they use particular services. So you don't have to have mental health services to have housing, even if you might need them.
Right, but you're not, I'm not talking about evicting, I'm talking about accepting initial applications.
We can't screen out people from coming to live at a place because they do or do not sign a piece of paper saying they will or won't accept services.
And then my third question was, if you really want to get people back on their feet, I mean, any good financial planner will tell you that your housing should be 20%, no more than 25% of your income. So why did, are you taking 30%?
So 30% is in both the state and federal rent-to-subsidiary programs. That's the standard that they set, is 30% of your gross income for all of your housing costs. So that includes rent and utilities.
And do you like find this to be successful in other communities?
Very. Do we find it to be successful in other communities or other projects? And my answer was, yes, we do.
Sure, yeah, so firstly, Housing Account Development Committee, they saw in the last presentation that Laura did fully supported this project, so I just wanted to the board and the audience to look at that. And so I guess the questions I have are a little bit more of a, I want to talk a little bit about financial impact, town, Laura.
Yep.
So one of the things that we've discussed in the past is that with the conversion to the Econo Lodge from the hotel to the affordable housing, obviously there's a loss to the town of that hotel tax that we have been enjoying. Again, it's the current owner's right to change, or at least try to change the use of that property. So I mean, it doesn't, whether it's going to go to affordable housing or the ref, they could apply to convert to something else. So we understand that that's really not comfortable. Our understanding is also that you would continue to pay property taxes, correct?
Correct. So affordable housing pays, this type of affordable housing would pay taxes according to its assessed value.
So one of the questions I had is just, and I think there's some consternation about the revenue side of the equation, the impact of the town. So has the Valley CDC in the past ever worked at any sort of upfront, maybe one-time community impact agreement where you might consider? I understand it can be on a number basis, and that would make sense that you're getting an annual operating payment or something like that. But would you consider working out something with the town where you might be able to do something in the context of whether it's public safety or border health or-
Yeah. It's a pretty negotiable process, the comp permit. Other communities tend to have not so much project by project, but they have standards for impact. So for example, in Northampton, there's always a traffic analysis and traffic mitigation. You might have to pay for traffic mitigation, you might have to pay because you're removing trees. So certainly we could, we can look at that. Best practices might be to have something that applies to all kinds of projects, not just to one specific project. I would just add, the current hotel owner who owns other hotels in Hadley projects, that there would not be a net loss of revenue, hotel revenue, because the hotels are not operating at capacity. And his feeling is that this is a destination related to the colleges and that what will happen is if the Econo Lodge is not there, you will simply have a higher occupancy rate at the other hotels that are in Hadley, which actually costs more, you could potentially see a bump in revenue. Again, I'm not in the hotel business, so I can't say if that's accurate or not. But it's not a one-for-one loss, because it's true, if people want to come and stay in the area, if one hotel leaves, they will, they will go to another hotel in the area. And so you still may have to that same revenue stream from people who are coming here, specifically to come here.
So something, and you'd be open-minded if this board, you know, wants to, at least, and you come to the table and have a conversation about some sort of community payment or whatever that may- You know, wants to, at least when you come to the table and have a conversation about some sort of community payment or whatever that may. Coverage of some piece of equipment, and whatever we might talk about, but we're at least open minded to.
I have a couple, um, one of the things is that, do you feel like this may cause uh any other problems? With the type of clientele that we might have living there as in like the nights. That brought people over and living in a hotel, hotel here on Route Nine, which we've had, you know, several calls from our police. Wondering in the future what it might bring to our infrastructure for police and fire. When green leaves went in, I think the fire department makes daily runs down there for. Whatever, whether it's a smoke detector going off, or if it's somebody that needs some help getting up, which is what we're here for.
Sure.
Um, and I'm just wondering with this type of clientele, do you think that we might need? You know, it's going to be two years down the road anyway that we're looking at this, that there might be other, other things that we might need to look at.
Yeah. Um, I wouldn't anticipate you have to change your staffing, public safety plan for your town. Would it generate calls, nine one one calls? Yeah, I mean, it's our job to make sure that's not an undue number of calls. Um, and that's why one of the slides that I prepared focused on staffing. Because my belief is it's really about having good management, um, I've talked with the police chief, I've talked with the fire chief. Some of them, some reps are here tonight and they can speak for themselves, but did not. It did not raise any alarm bells, um, in terms of the, the fire department being called. Has a lot to do with the infrastructure itself in the building, not the town's infrastructure, but you have an antiquated building. Um, that's tripping alarms, that's, that's problematic. Um, this is a pretty new building with sprinklers and, you know, a hardwired fire alarm system, so. We would hope not to have that particular kind of problem. Um, but yeah, I would say, w- we own other housing that houses people coming out of homelessness, people who are vulnerable, people who are low income. And we definitely see a bump in public safety calls, but it's not outrageous. Um, it's, it's higher than a typical per capita would be, we had a lot of discussion around this.
And I'm not pinpointing or pointing fingers at anybody, but we do have a lot of. Medical field ourselves, that there's a lot of mental health issues right now. Yeah, and our emergency rooms are overrun with mental health problems.
Yeah.
Um, in North Hampton, my dad lived in four sand apartments in Florence, um. And they had issues there, I can say, and that was a long time ago compared to even now. What is has increased to as, as, um, street, I don't know where your facilities are, are there in North Hampton?
We have several in North Hampton, we have one in Amherst and another one actually under construction now in Amherst. What I would say we've seen as a pattern is, I, I think there are more high need folks in our world. I think there are more high need tenants, and so our response has been increased levels of support and staffing. You know, when we started building housing for people who are homeless, we were like, it's housing, like, that's all they need. It's just off the street into housing, everything's good, and sometimes it is, sometimes that's true, someone literally just needs a place to live. But it's not always true, and so our sense is that permanent supportive housing, which is this model. Is extremely successful at keeping people out of emergency room. Um, and nine one one circumstances, like that's the whole point of it, is to take folks that are kind of spiraling and using. A, a lot of public services and stabilize them.
I know we have met already, our.
You're ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yep. You're above ten percent. And there was some discussion with the planning board about properties that were coming off of that. Inventory and some strategic thinking on the part of the town about wanting to keep that ten percent level going forward.
Does Bill, Bill, you want, do you know what our percentage is right now for long term housing?
I believe we're uh between twelve and thirteen percent at the moment. Uh, a certain number of the uh, the properties over uh. In the, uh, they changed this name now, um. The one across from uh, across the street, uh, the one in, one in back. When, it was Winfield, but it's something else now, uh, a certain number of those. Those are scheduled to come off the inventory when their financing is paid off. Um, so, um, you know, we're trying to keep an eye on, on staying above the uh, ten percent. And this project is proposing that the uh, the units will be perpetually restricted. The Winfield project was only restricted for the life of the loan they uh, they had to, to build it. We may be able to do some work about extending that, uh, I believe David Nixon was able to get an extension of the apartments on uh. The Stop and Shop Access Road for a few years, uh, but they're also. Coming off at some point. So this is a proactive way to add to our inventory of affordable housing. Um, with a perpetual cap on it, or perpetual norm limit on it. In a space that's already, property that's already developed in uh, on a street that's already busy. Two questions, please, um, after you were to do your renovations, Laura, do you have any idea how that will impact the assessed value of the building?
Yeah, um, usually the assessed value is done based on the revenue stream. So it's a return on investment formula that the assessors would do. So it's really about the rents that are coming in and expenses of operating the property, which is the same way that. I would assume the assessors look at the building now, it's not so much the, the cost of building it. It is what does it generate as a business, and so what is its assessed value as a business income stream? Um, when we did an appraisal of the property, they looked at it the same way, they looked at occupancy, revenue. Net, net earnings, and they backed into return on investment, and that became the um assessed, appraised value of the property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and are you going to limit the number of people that will be allowed in a unit?
Yes, so um typically studio is for one person. I'd have to look again at the board of health, there are state board of health requirements in terms of how much square footage you need per person in a unit. So you might be able to have two people, we typically just advertise them for one person because they are so small. And then I think the one bedrooms would also mostly have one person, but they can accommodate a couple.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, is there any way, and the answer is probably no, but to, uh, because it's inhabited, offered the heavy residence. Who are looking to downsize before opening into the public?
Yeah, so um, again, once you get state funding, you kind of play by state rules. Um, they do allow towns to request what's called local preference. Um, it's something the town would request um as part of that forty B comprehensive permit process. Um, and they cap it at seventy percent of the units, and it's only during the initial lease up of the property. Um, and you have to make an argument that you have the demand in your. Community for those units to get um approval for local preference.
I want to keep moving on the agenda, is there any more questions for Laura, Laura's here?
Laura, something you, you mentioned in your slide presentation, a letter of support.
Yep.
Is that something you're requesting tonight, or?
Yeah, if the board feels prepared to talk about it and, and you think you can do that or allow the. Housing and Economic Development Committee to do a letter, it could come from either body.
I think the actual letter that you just put in on our next agenda. Right, thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome, thank you for so much time.
Thank you, and thanks for, for coming back and giving us a more detailed of the.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to you, this is.
So, um, I thought it was important to bring this to the board, um, to kind of. Give you an old, like a big picture of what it's like when we're trying to address some of our infrastructure issues. Um, I guess up until a few hours ago, I was pretty excited that we might have. On a, a project that Scott today explained, it was a wonderful opportunity to be back with Mass DOT. Um, Scott's put a lot of time into it, Altazar, um, from Mass DOT, he had to put a lot of work into it. But, you know, it's been, we're basically not charged, right, right, Scott? Um, and so it's one of those, having on Scott's biggest miss for sure, as well as planning and. Um, is South Maple Street and, and extensions from thirty feet off of Route Nine, correct? Which is where the Mass DOT present scope of work is going to, and then bringing it to um. The net that I know about well, um, where those water mains really need to be replaced. Um, we had a great opportunity, spent a lot of time talking about it, and never been in-house, I used to try to see how could we fund this? So I just want to kind of give you a picture of what the project is. And then Linda is going to kind of outline what we've all were meeting about and talking about. Hoping that there's possible funding source, but we kind of really needed to fold the camera at this point. Uh, Laura, I do see us on here, I, I think at this point we're going to give us a show right now, or a little bit of standstill in this. Waiting on some additional possible funding, but I will, um, I feel like Scott just kind of gave you an overview. Um, can we, is there anything to pull up?
There, there are some documents, I can pull up, I can share them if you'd like.
Uh, good evening, everyone, all. Yeah, I've been talking to Carolyn about uh. Increasing our scope of work on South Maple Street, uh, in our current Route Nine plans, we are doing some uh water main work there. Uh, and with, with all the trouble we've been having in that area, water quality, fire protection, et cetera. Uh, we were, have been talking to the contractor about extending our scope of work through uh, the current contract. Uh, and we, we were looking at replacing one thousand three hundred twenty feet of water main, which would go. From, from almost a bike, bike path to the intersection of Mill Valley Road. Uh, in doing, doing that, uh, we'd be piggybacking off of our current uh, agreement. So we wouldn't have to go out to any kind of bidding or anything of that nature. And as Carolyn explained, I have been working with the contractor and Mass DOT on this. And, and this is kind of, uh, this, just. The thirteen hundred and twenty feet is just the tip of the iceberg with this, but it is. I guess a once in a lifetime opportunity for us because it's. The design phase, which normally would cost us. Uh, considerable amount of money has been uh, looked at by the state and the contractor. So we're, we're saving right out of the gate with this going to that distance, uh. I, I, I just, I, I don't know how to ask for the, you know, Carol, we've been talking about the money and et cetera, and this is just. This would be hu- huge for this area, uh, to get some good fire protection and just get some, a good. Path for the future of continuation also, because uh, the design is, the way it's designed, we can easily continue further. With a relative, relatively easy uh continuation, but obviously that would have to be designed and gone through all that. But in this particular circumstance, uh. We, we, I talked to uh, uh, Mr. Goulet. Uh, because we want us to uh, not impact the road, we want to put our pipe off the road. And there's some, all that, there's a high pressure gas vein there that we have to stay so many feet away from, and we'd be. Encroaching a little bit on Mr. Goulet's property, and he is willing to work with us on that. Uh. As part of this, he, he is a big fan of this, he, he wants to see this happen, uh. And just, it would benefit everyone in a huge way, uh, just. It, and it would help out the uh, the new building that's being built there, because they're looking at trying to get. Uh, water for fire protection that, that building. Yes, and that hasn't been really thoroughly hashed out yet of how that's happening. If, if we could do this, we could, you know, we would go past their property and leave them a proper connection that they could hook on to. So it, it, it would really be a win for everyone in the area, uh. It i- it is something that unfortunately, uh, we have to kind of make a decision on. Uh, for material wise, that's the biggest, I think the materials might be even harder to uh, come by than the money. Uh. It, the, the timeframe is crazy on materials, so if this is something we wanted to do, we kind of have to. Uh, a yay or nay decision on, because they have to order the materials, because uh, they're looking to get started on this project. Uh, after the fourth of July, us, out, out here in front of the uh, the Slegian area, and then skipping where. They're ever need to go, but it's something that we need to look at, and it would give ideal movers. Some kind of uh, decision on what their next step is to, there's, there's a lot of things in lingo with this, uh, us doing this.
So just to add to this, um, about a month and a half ago, we had notice from Division of Local Services, got a grant that. Um, a year ago, I've been denied, which was, if you remember, it's Halloween, the approval was to. Um, borrow for the replacement of the water lines on Route Nine, sewer lines. Um, but it was, you know, I was hopeful that we would get the scramble, it was denied, but um. We were, we did find out from Department of Division of Local Services that if the four were funding, this is another part of our, our budget. Say two or three, uh, when the, when the uh, state budget passes, it's very likely. That they would in fact be funding that for a million dollars. This is where we got really excited, and Laura, this is awesome, because this additional scope of work is about four hundred and fifty. And this would have been just a, a win-win situation, so, uh, but. I have found that even up to about twenty minutes ago, that funding, well, the state budget does not look like it's going to get approved into the midsummer. So, um, I do, I, I still want to see some of the work that was done behind the scenes, and so, um. Behind the scenes, meaning finance, to working hard, trying to find this, so Linda, can you kind of give a summary? What we were hopeful for, but realized we don't have authorization to spend this money until town meeting.
Right, um, yeah, I hope I'm not repeating, I had a little trouble hearing um, the opening of this. Um, yeah, we were, so this goes back to, we approved um, an annual town meeting of. Twenty-one, um, the eight hundred and five thousand dollars to do the water lines. Um, piggybacking on the Mass, Mass DOT project, the, the main part of Route Nine, the primary project that we were always talking about. So we have authorization from town meeting, um, to borrow eight hundred and five thousand dollars for this project. Also, that's on water, and there was also a hundred and twenty thousand on sewer, and so since that, and money was requested at that time, but we didn't get it. Um, and this time it looks like we're going to get a million dollars, which makes it look like. Uh, which basically covers that initial project in full, we wouldn't need to borrow that, any of the money that was approved at town meeting. But rather than turn that back, um, there is this opportunity to solve a longstanding problem as uh, as Scott has. Has uh, explained well, and Carolyn's, uh, Scott and Carolyn know more about the work part of it than I do, but. Um, we also know that we've gotten complaints from that. And that section of town about what's going on with their water, and it'd be, uh, seems like a really nice way to resolve, uh, to, to settle. Um, to, to take care of that at the same time, so with this additional project adding five hundred thousand, we don't. Have the five thousand dollars authorized to spend on this, except for the million dollars. So this is the bind that we find ourselves in, um, there is a hearing later this week, um, on, on the bill before, uh, before the state. There is a hearing later this week on, on the bill before, before the state. For the forward bill and approving the money. I think it's two point three billion dollars in all, almost about two point three billion dollars, of which hardly gets a million dollars for this Route nine project. But we don't have it right now because it hasn't been approved yet. So we, and we need to come up with the approval in the short run. So we started trying to figure out how we could put some pieces together, how can we get there as if we weren't getting the million dollars? And. Normally these are fun things, but we're kind of running out of pockets. ARPA money that we have, the total amount that we received, we really only have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left to throw at this project. And that's if we squeeze a bit more on, maybe the trailers won't run as much, maybe the other. Maybe the other infrastructure projects that were approved aren't going to cost quite so much. Let's say we could even get another fifty thousand out of it, we would still be short. Short a few hundred thousand dollars. So, so we did come up with some creative things and I'll spare you on that. About, just to, just to tell you, we do get pretty creative about how we can get some money. But then we have to talk to our accountant, who, who is, knows what we can and can't do without authorization. And in fact, she have, she is on, I don't know that we need her for this, but she's on, Lori Delollio is on now. Carolyn and I spoke with her this afternoon and, and shot down some of our ideas. But I think the one that is remaining, well, first of all, if we, we could here in the next couple of weeks, we get this million dollars. So. Our local politicians, if you have any way that you can talk to our, our state representatives and get that bill passed, that would be ideal. Because then we wouldn't be in this problem, we wouldn't be in this pickle at all. But if we don't get that in the next couple of weeks, the only remaining solution that we can find is to go ahead and. Is to ask that you schedule a special town meeting. Or maybe a one article town meeting that we have on a few weeks' notice to get enough people in to approve this project. It would need to be, if we put it in to be borrowed, to be paid out of water receipts. We know right now, we have one point two million dollars in water reserves, there's the money to do that. But we can't spend the water reserves on this because after June thirtieth, the money won't be certified. So it's a borrowing thing. So it's really your call as to whether the, I know it's, it's a nuisance and there's a bit of an expense. Jessica says it's not as high as expense as going to having an extra election. But, but. That seems to be the only way that we could have actual authorization in hand. So that when Carolyn and Scott need to tell them, yes, it's a go, that we would have the, we would be legitimate in saying that.
Question's very close to Scott, so the four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars would be required to make this project happen? How much would we, would we be saving what would otherwise cost in the absence of what we can even work out?
I don't have a, I don't have a real number on that for you because. Like I said, the design and everything was done. In their good graces to try to help, help the town out that they're already working here. So they took this for no expense. So I, I, I couldn't even begin to tell, engineering is very expensive.
It's a bigger number than what it would cost us to schedule a special town meeting.
Yes, be, yes. The engineering cost, mobilization charges, things that go on that, that they're already here working. Bid docs and all that, things that Jennifer would be involved in with the, the whole process would change. We'd have to go out for a total. Change of scope of work.
It would, it would be massive and time, and time consuming to prepare the bid docs. And we have to go out to bid for the engineers to do the engineering for us. And it, it's not just the one going out to bid, it would be the two, because you'd have to have an engineer write your script for it.
All right, I move the recall special town meeting vote on this before article.
I'll second up the discussion.
And the motion in the second for the discussion?
It seems like, and, and maybe to your point, Jane, you need to run a kind of a bifurcated path, so. Well, trifurcate, except I'm sure Linda's going to keep thinking about creative ways to find money. But if the two paths forward right now would be to go with special town meeting. And the other one is to do everything we can to get our state, to, to get behind our state legislators to push this forward. I mean, that's the, the easy thing to have happen, right? And but the, does the timing on that work? I mean, I'd no problem calling Dan Carey and Simmons Joe Comerford are the two offices that we'd be calling, is that right?
Just looking at what it's going to.
Vote to second of July.
Here's another one, I think you'd say. The way you're on the conference committee to give us a final version, it's got to be in June thirtieth. Although it's sometime at the end of July, at the time you've got your signs up. So is that the end of June?
That timing, does that even work?
Well, his current bid is only good for thirty days. So that. The, the volatility of materials is crazy, so that no one holds any pricing for a long term. So.
Scott, thirty days starting when?
From June eighth.
So we're July eighth.
If we had a special town meeting, we're ready to appropriate the transfer from the reserves and the money came in from the state, could we then replenish or not?
We, we can't actually move money from reserves after June thirtieth. Because. Even though we have one point two million in right now, if we had a special time meeting next week, we could spend it. But remember, it, it, it goes away and has to be recertified as of July first. So we actually don't have any money to spend first week in July. And I don't think we can get it in before the end of June. And I'm not sure that's a good idea if we, if we have, still have this possibility of getting the million dollars anyways. I don't know that we want to schedule it that quickly. I didn't know we had thirty days from June eighth, so. Everything kind of changes the picture a little bit.
Is there any possibility of short-term borrowing?
Yeah, it's not a matter of ha, of having the money to do it, it's the authorization to spend the money. We're looking for the authorization from town meeting or the only source that we don't need authorization from, except through the select board, is. Is the ARPA funds. So, and we only have about a hundred and fifty thousand of that.
So, on an alternative call, what if we ordered the materials, would the ARPA funds cover those if the contract doesn't go through?
He doesn't have the bid broke down like that, I'm not sure exactly what the material price is. It's just priced out as the job.
But to Jane's point, is there a way to shop it up into the pieces?
Yeah. I agree with that, I was thinking the exact same thing Jane just said. If we could, if we have enough money to buy the materials, and that's the concern, because I don't think they're going to start construction on this in thirty days. If we had materials, yeah, if we had materials in hand and not have to worry about that, not being able to get them, number one, or price increase, number two. Then we can, we have some more time to figure out how to pay for the actual construction costs.
Yeah, so again, I appreciate that, that motion. I do think we need to get finance and capital to do this as well. So I would, I guess I would want to. It's been pretty stuck, yeah, and we just, we just ruled this today.
And just for one more time, this is just the tip of the iceberg for a half a million dollars. So just picture that in your minds, that it's costing us to go from the white path to that intersection, half a million dollars. Never mind, you know, going down Mill Valley to the Parsons Farm or continuing to Bay Road. This is a long-term, very expensive project, but it is an excellent start.
Or can somebody just remind me, where, where, where did the ARPA money go?
Linda asked the whole world, right?
Oops, wrong one, sorry. So we had, we were, our total amount was one point five six million dollars. We used about five hundred, almost five hundred eighty thousand of it towards the FY twenty-two budget. And we have allocated four hundred thousand of it for the twenty-three budget. That brings us down to five hundred eighty-three, five hundred eighty-four thousand. So the non-budgeted expenses, we have DPW, water sewer infrastructure, there's how many projects? The culvert few, I think it's two or three projects more than that, Scott? Basically three hundred thousand dollars was authorized by select board to spend on water sewer infrastructure projects. Is that accurate still, Scott, that the three hundred thousand?
Yes, but I think the three hundred thousand may be. A little on the high side, still working on closing out. Current ones that we did to get more accurate. Numbers as the bills come in, because we did that, one was an emergency and we really. Our procurement was waived, so we didn't, it was a timing material by a lot of people and they're just coming in now with their bills. So we're, we're processing all that right now. So in the next week to ten days, I think we'll have a, a much better idea where we are.
Okay, then we can work on that, but it's possible, or if there's something that hasn't been done there, it's possible that we could grab some, get some money back out of that three hundred. And I'm not sure this is going to solve the problem, but we do what, we do what we can. But assuming that we don't get any back from that, that three hundred thousand for those infrastructure projects. Brings us down to two hundred eighty-four thousand, we have a hundred, a hundred thousand was allocated out of our ARPA funds for the DPW trailers. That's in addition to a hundred thousand that was. Now, has this been definitely approved, Carolyn, for DPW that, I mean, DO, state has approved. Hundred, an extra hundred thousand for the trailers. And, and we, and we may not need the full two hundred between the two. So we might be looking at maybe getting twenty thousand back from that. We had your, you had your streetlights project that we are advancing some of the money, I have that down at forty thousand. I don't know if that's, if we get that forty thousand. Is that the forty thousand we get back, Carolyn? The, what we.
No, we're taking, yeah, I think it was forty to forty-five, we're just, we are getting about thirty back, but we can't reverse.
Okay, so anyways, using the forty thousand, that leaves us a hundred and forty-four thousand, if I add some of those things back. You know, we still don't, we probably still have less than two hundred thousand available, so it's more like a hundred and fifty maybe to, well, it could be two hundred thousand. Depending on how much comes back out of, so we could have two hundred thousand to put at this, at the project. I was estimating, I mean, I was using a five hundred thousand dollar figure for the, for the project. But Scott, your, your figure was. You said it was four forty-eight?
Four forty-eight, but that doesn't include, as we were talking yesterday. The police details are not included in that and removal of two trees, but that's relatively minor. But I think the police details are going to be the most expensive. Part, and I'm not sure what their timeframe is on that, or what, what his man, what he's thinking his hours are, I guess. Like I said, his quote's not broke down like that.
Right.
I, I, I would imagine this would be, you know, three, four week minimal project. It's, it's, at times. Two officers, eight hours a day, so when that. Times, I believe the current rate's fifty-five or fifty-four dollars an hour, so that's, that's going to add up fast.
Right.
And Lori, I think we saw Lori, ARPA funds, we can, we can reverse or not?
I didn't hear the question. That we get the forty, that you're talking about the streetlights money? So when we get that money back, it goes. Does it go to Lori, when, yeah, when, when we get the ARPA money back on the reimbursement on the streetlights, it has to go back to ARPA?
Correct.
Okay, so it would be available to us again. All right, so see, we're finding a little more money, but we're still a couple hundred thousand dollars short. It seems we're so close. And if we get this million, you know, we don't even have to borrow all the money, or we'll find another project, I guess. I mean, we'll extend it some further, I don't know. But we're just stuck in this.
So why don't we put this on our next agenda and see where we are?
Maybe it'll be good news.
Everybody please call your representative in the state senator and ask him to move this go forward.
Yeah, and if possible, Scott, if you can get a breakdown from Baltasar, that would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, I, I can ask him for that, Randy, I'm sure that's not going to be a problem.
Thank you.
Is the bill reference number in an email to someone? Or could it be someone we call, we have to.
Records for the funding?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All right, moving along, Scott, you're also going to talk about cemetery mowing contract.
Scott and I opened the bids together, but I did, I did the follow-up. So we went out to bid for cemetery mowing for the five cemeteries. We did receive a couple of bids. A master was the best bid that we received. And we are recommending that we award the bid to a master landscaping.
So I have a note, so you took that, the results of the, the recommendation from the director? I moved.
Wait a second, I moved it, but go ahead.
Mine, no, about eighty seconds.
Okay.
I guess I gotta speak louder.
Put your microphone. Rocco? Evan Smith?
Yes.
Changelo? Parsons?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bring up something, something. We usually have actual motions that they would read, and I'm just worried that it's gotten somewhat loose in that regard. So that when motions are made. It may not be as clear as we need them to be, so is that something we could work on, maybe getting into the? I know you don't always know what motions are meant, but.
Um, Carolyn and I have been. We're, we're working at it. Yes, she, she's big fan. You can, yeah, you can sing about it, throw them up the park.
Scott, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
And thank you for her, Christopher, the lower end of forty-seven, it's really nice.
Okay, yeah, that, that, yeah, that was completed last Friday.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, moving along to the IQ Management Spanish services.
Okay. I am, I'm going to talk about that. The town has had a very successful, long-term relationship with Northeast IT. But the contract had ended, we could not renew it any longer. We went out to bid again, we received about ten requests from IT companies. We only received two bids, but they were from two qualified companies. Carolyn and I reviewed the bids and then opened the price proposals. And we have decided that I, Northeast IT is the company that we should award the bid to again.
And we have decided that IT, Northeast IT is the company that we should award the bid to again. Um, just to give you a little information, um, they were about $10,000 cheaper than the other company. Um, and they're for a year, it's $48,000. They did go up on some stuff like everybody else. Um, there's some extra costs that weren't there uh in the past. Um, one of them being, what is a supported user? Um, that price has gone up from uh 70, 65 to 85. Um, and that's what's actually caused that little bump, is the fact that we added three extra users the last year. So that's why we're going from 45 to 48. Um, so that is the recommendation that Carolyn, I can say that, that we, we did as the evaluators and we are, we've been very satisfied with them, so I feel like it's a good relationship for the town to continue.
Motion to award the managed IT services to the town of Hattie to Northeast IT consulting.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Jennifer, Rocco, please.
We'll call the Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelin? Parsons?
Yes.
Izzy?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the Council on Aging Archive Administrative Assistant. Um, there's a change from what I see on the board office there. Okay, um, so the Council on Aging has offered the position to Leslie Owen, and she's willing to start 19 hours a week on July 7th. And so we need to approve that.
Give me just two seconds, because this one actually has a motion built into it, and I just want Molly to see that. Recommended action.
Will you change Kelly Ferguson's name?
It is, if you'll, if you hit refresh, you just hit.
Do we really need to approve a part-time administrative that can be delegated? Yeah, it just seems like there's to be some delegation authority.
All right, I have a motion, one second.
I didn't get a motion for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Yeah, we make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Council on Aging Director to hire Leslie Owen as our new COA Part-Time Administrative Assistant, uh, working 19 hours a week at a rate of $19 per. One second.
Second.
Rocco the, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelin?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Izzy?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, 5.5, Boarding Committee Reappointments. This is an annual event that happens. Unfortunately, not all committees have returned their lists.
So I think we should postpone this to our next meeting. I actually would like you to go ahead and appoint everybody that's on the list here. Um, and, because it, 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 for some reason this year we had difficulties returning the forms. Um, I got them by text and by uh picture and on Google Docs and all sorts of different ways. It was, it was a bit of a opening, and unfortunately, several of the committees did not respond to my request. Um, but um, I actually can't open it on my computer, uh, but it is a pretty full and robust list. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm going to politely disagree.
That's not a full. Okay.
Okay, and the reason being that um because it was a work in progress, and again, that's not on you that people didn't get back to you, so. So I know that you were trying to get people to respond, but the other thing is that um could be wrong, but I think there was a little bit of a problem last year, one just got brushed through a bit. And so, for example, I got a phone call from somebody who went to the town report that said, oh, I see there's a vacancy on the ambulance committee. So I think we need to do a reconciliation between what went into the, is in the town report, what's on here, because on here it doesn't show that there's a vacancy. I wasn't aware that there's a vacancy.
Hey, Bar Service Line, there's a vacancy, and the reason you don't see it on there is because this is just the people who are due for reappointment. This is not a full list. This is literally the people who are due for reappointment and new members. That's it. It's not, I don't have everybody on there, because otherwise it would be multiple pages long. So I send out the requests with all the people that are on their board and say, these people are highlighted in yellow, please confirm that they wish to remain, and they respond, is how it goes in theory. Um, because for, for example, the ambulance committee, I knew you were saying, I knew you were saying, I knew Mike was saying, Barbara Connor was a unknown, and I knew there was a vacancy.
Well, she's not another.
You, you said that at 6 o'clock.
It was just not until.
Right, so um, so the reason why it's not a full and complete list is because this is the reappointments. So I only put the people on there who are being reappointed.
So is there, is there, I mean, what's the doubt? If we don't approve it tonight, we just put it on another meeting?
You just.
I just, it's so last minute, I haven't had a chance to really.
Okay.
That's all.
That's fine. Okay.
What do you need to move to?
June 30th.
We're not having another meeting.
Well, that's our next agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the list that you have given us tonight. Reappointments of the annual people for the uh.
Could I ask?
For the board and committee.
Can I ask if this does not mean that no one else is going to be appointed to anything? I don't know how you would phrase that, but this isn't kicking anybody off of anything, it's just the, these people on this list are being appointed.
And there's the agenda?
Yes.
To uh list the next thing.
Second.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, you know, I think we need to, again, it's just an area that we need to button up, it's just gotten really loose. Um, I don't know what the process is for, you know, it says new member. I don't know if there are multiple people that has to be on a committee or one went on, I mean, all of that stuff.
Okay.
It just, there's no.
Okay.
I mean, I think the committee of science are important, uh, and I don't, I don't want anybody to get short shrift. Those, those people that were just appointed were.
There were new members on there, because.
New members, because the other ones had resigned.
In the cultural council, they have to resign, they can't go again in five years. Um, they do their five years, they can't stay any longer, so those three openings fulfilled by three people. Um, and the Health and Economic Development Committee was by a person who had contacted you.
Yep.
Um, and I'm sorry, for some reason this computer won't let me open um this on here, so I can't, I literally can't look at my own list to discuss it in full. But if you, it's a, whatever your pleasure is, is what I will do. And I can make a, a more complete list for next time, or I can bring this list back with the additional list next time, y'all can vote on all of them again. It's whatever, whatever works.
Yeah, Jennifer. Um, to Molly's question, were there more than, were there multiple applicants for a position? In other words, were there more people than applied that we have openings for? No, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rocco. Appreciate that. I'm really mixed, and I think Molly's right, we need to get this for next year organized in a better way. And we don't need to wait till the last minute, we need to figure out a system. But I think that we should honor those people who have turned their requests need to be reappointed, and encourage all those who have not done that yet to, please do it soon possibly.
Yeah, and the, the last-minute detail stuff, I, I get, and I, I, I'm not gonna, no, blame Jennifer for this, because I know people don't reapply when they're supposed to. They have months or whatever, and they wait till the last minute, and as she said, she's got it coming at her from 15 different directions. So I agree with Jane, we just approve what she's got for tonight, and we deal with the rest when it comes in.
Any further discussion? No.
Oh, correct.
Um, Rocco the, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelin?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Izzy?
Yes.
Again.
Spirit of unanimity, yes.
Thank you. Um, I would ask if, in particular, the Climate Change Committee and the Shade Tree Committee could please get their responses back to me? That would be super helpful.
Uh, hey Jennifer, I sent it to you on the 20th. I emailed it to you, I had, I have it in my email files. I sent it right back to you the morning of the 20th. So if you check your email, you'll, you should find it.
I, I super check my email every day, and when I saw you popped on, I checked my email, and I, I don't have an email from you. So if you could resend it, that would be really great. But thank you.
All right.
Jane, Jane, it's changed just 35 minutes. Um, I think it's something is to put on a future agenda, because I think it could be smoother process, but I think I can have it. Because I think you, I think you actually need some documentation to be filled in, because I, I felt her need to, she had texts, she had PDFs that she couldn't copy and paste, and it comes with all different measures and send. So I do think there's a way that we could do this much smoother and take the stress off of Jennifer's call. And then, and then you have the replicas, and you can meet with them.
And there's no reason that we can't have these lists turned in by May.
And FYI, every town goes through this, and you are not unique.
All right, all right. All right, so let's put this on, not next weekend, but down the road.
Well, it'll be on, if we're gonna finish everybody else, yeah, because like Jack's gonna resend me his.
Looking at the process, we need to put that ahead.
You got it. Committee process, absolutely.
All right, so that would be scheduled, I would propose that we meet not the week of July 6th, because it's a holiday week and a lot of people, it's obviously. That we meet next week, and that where you can legally appoint people to committees within the appropriate time. Or maybe shortly, and then we can, for either the first or the second week. Or the second or the third in July.
And Jessica, if you have time, I just resent it from the other day.
I suggest, I think that might be where the problem is. My name is Jennifer, and my email is info@hadleyma.org, and Jessica is the town clerk, and her email is clerk@hadleyma.org.
All right, I got you, all right.
All right. That probably is why I did not get the change.
All right, so we need a systematic form that we're going to send.
We, we have, we have the.
All right.
But we'll fix it.
Hi, everybody, can I just say, I'm Laurie, I'm the Towne of Cotton. I just wanted to, while you guys are planning your meetings, we're gonna probably have to do an end-of-year transfer meeting with the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. So I just want, if you're up, you know, planning your upcoming meetings, I just want to get that on your agenda.
So that would be next week?
Yeah, well, you meet every two weeks typically? Every two weeks on Wednesday?
First and third.
First and third.
But I'm proposing not the first for July, and we can either move it back a week for the end of June or forward.
I mean, if our meetings are going to continue to be two and a half, three hours long, then um maybe we should have one next week to kind of catch up on this. The finance, the finance piece of it will be quick, I can just have something prepared and discuss it, and we can just vote on it. So that shouldn't take up that much time, I'll do all the legwork, you guys just need to listen and do all the approvals. It's just moving, you know, funds from one to another if necessary, so. Um.
Can you be ready, can you be ready for next week?
Yeah, yeah, if we have to, yeah. We'll have to do a little projecting, but we can make it happen.
Well, I, I guess that's up to you, I don't know what you have to do, so you tell us what you need.
Is Linda still on? Because Linda gave a good um update of what she thinks is gonna, where we're gonna end up. But um, yeah, I mean, if you guys, can you get the Finance Committee on board too next week?
That's probably gonna push it, I think.
Right. Oh, and we're saying that we don't want to do the 6th, well, we, by you, whoever suggested it.
Can you look here at the microphone?
If you were gonna do it without, um, without having to do projections, it's by the 15th that the final bills are paid, is that right? I mean, it's two weeks later, still take care of it? No, we have to do it, but we have to vote it by the 15th. So everybody, so if we said we didn't have a meeting until the 13th, um, what would that do for you guys? That, that would be perfect, because the later the better for me, but you guys could meet on the 13th instead of the 20th, maybe. Oh, 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 you were thinking the 20, okay, I was thinking it would be the 13th, so. Oh, because the first and the third, so the six. You're, you're right, but they're. Till the 27th. But they're not doing the first because of 4th of July, so. The 13th would be perfect, if that could work for the FinCom too.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with the 29th and the 13th.
But if we're doing the 13th, do we need the 29th, if the reason that we were doing the 29th was to get it in before the end of the year? Or is there a different reason on top of that?
Also, the appointment of committees this fourth of August starting July 1st. Still contain that until the 13th. But I think we, that most of the.
I, I, I think, I think so, none of these committees are um financial or anything like that, they're your volunteer boards and committees.
So those can be postponed till the 13th?
I, I believe so.
Carolyn, do you, do you have any problem with that, if we wait till the 13th?
Probably not, it's not, it's just a matter of putting out, we have corps for each board. That'll give us plans. All right, they have a motion.
So motion to have our next meeting on Ju- uh, July 13th, 2022.
What, what about if we have to call a special town meeting? I thought we were going to talk about that in the next couple of weeks. Carolyn, is that enough time? For the, the water project?
Is, is it no time for what? What are you asking me to do on this?
I thought we were going, wanted to meet sooner because of the water uh project. Because otherwise it's, we're talking about three weeks?
I, I really have to look at it, because where I want, we need to get time and capital on board as well. All right, why, let's go on the 13th, if we need to pull a meeting together, uh, we can always do it midday on Zoom. It doesn't have to be at night, it doesn't have to be on Wednesday, I think there's some flexibility. If there's an extra meeting, we can put it in there.
I have a motion for raising, right?
What about the second meeting, it's saying that you're not that, is it the 20th or what?
So we're doing the 20th or the 27th for the second meeting? Yeah, two weeks in a row. Do you want to, get back on schedule? 13 and 20. We need to have that in the motion, or can we just do it?
It's.
You want me to amend my motion to the 13th and the 20th?
It's just administrative, and we don't need a motion.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I'm Mary, you're here for the climate.
Okay, hi, um, I'll try to be brief, I know you all have been meeting for quite a while now. Um, I'm ca- I'm speaking on behalf of the Hadley Climate Change Committee. Um, we have drafted a resolution declaring a climate emergency. Um, and we're asking that the town sign this declaration. Uh, it has been, we sent you copies and we had it available um to be looked at. We, we, we were on display at the Asparagus Festival and got feedback from people um who had a chance to. We, we, we were on display at the Asparagus Festival and got feedback from people who had a chance to read it. And we had, had some very thoughtful conversations about the declaration. It would be of no cost to the town. Mostly what it would be, the town deciding that they are going to take climate change seriously, that they are going to declare it as an emergency, and that it is a, it's a document that guides our town and helps us to make important decisions about how we, about how we're going to protect our town and protect our planet and protect our citizens and our wildlife and our land and our forests. There's about 1,900 local governments that have signed a, a similar kind of declaration along with about 34 countries. And up to over, including over 20, over 20 towns, the last time we checked, in, in the state of Massachusetts, including Boston, Lexington, Acton, Northampton, Amherst, and about 11 towns on the Cape. We all know that there's many things going on, many important climate change effects happening all over the world and in this part of the world. And so we want this to be just a document that we have and use and refer to and guide us. Maybe, you know, it's not binding, but guides us and helps us to make important decisions as we move forward in, in our work together. So, we've already taken some actions. We are moving ahead on the Green Community Designation. We had our first Climate Day, which was very successful. And we continue, we, we, we signed the plastic ban. And the town is now ready to implement some of the critical transitions away from fossil fuels. We've taken steps there. And to advance a robust, carbon-free, equitable economy and improve the health and quality of life that will result. So that is why I am here today, is just to let you know that we would like the town to sign this and join many other communities around the state of Massachusetts. So that's my piece.
So, in reading this document, it appears to me that the, the only thing that the town would be locked into, other than agreeing that there's a climate change issue and stuff needs to be done to deal with it, that the Climate Change Committee would work with town officials to try to get grant money or, I'll call it free money to the town to put towards trying to eliminate some of these issues, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it would be of no cost to the town.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Jack Zykowski here with a comment. Randy, we are actively pursuing a Green Community Designation. The town would receive a designation fee from the state of about $130,000. If we can get that enacted by the end of the year. We've been working diligently on the five criteria that are expected for that.
And is this part of that, Jack?
It is. It, it's the whole package. Everything we're doing is for the benefit of the town, aiming toward reducing climate change.
And, and you're not proposing that we stop farmers from using tractors and things like that, unless there's technology that is financially appropriate for their situation?
Randy, every farmer that I know is trying to do everything they possibly can to save some money this summer.
Okay.
Well, we're hoping, you know, that we can find ways to support our farmers and to make certain shifts in their practice. But it's not like a, it's not in any way sort of a, it's really to support, support our farmers in, in practice, in, you know, kind of incentivizing, or I think I have it here.
I mean, if there's a certain page, you can tell me, I'm sharing it on the screen.
Okay, great. Just, we wrote down pursuing incentives for farmers to adopt regenerative farming, which includes soil conservation and the sequestration of carbon. But, you know, it's, it's, it's seeing if there's incentives out there, you know? Looking into that, finding ways to support our farmers, finding ways to, you know, to keep, to preserve our forests so that we can, you know, you know, sequester carbon, you know, just the, all the different steps that we need to take to mitigate climate emergencies in this town.
Would it be appropriate, given the nature of this, to consider this as first reading? And just give us a chance to think through this and then hope to adopt this at a subsequent meeting versus time subsequently.
Don't think it's that far, it's actually good. We can do this as a set and have a second reading. We'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting, and take a vote on it.
Is that okay for the Climate Committee's finding that as well?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, thanks, Molly.
Yep.
And thank all the Climate Committee for their work on this.
Yep.
Thank you, thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
All right, we're now at 5.8 communications, social media, that is the select boards item to talk about how we want to further routine our goals of improving communication for town.
In the spirit of time, do we want to move this to a subsequent agenda? This is an incredibly important topic, but just worry about getting a little bit short shrift.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense.
Would you like the 13th?
Randy, you okay with that too, and Amy?
I didn't really hear what you said, Molly. You, you guys are a little garbled.
I'm fine with that.
I was just suggesting, in the spirit of time, we move this to a subsequent agenda, because otherwise, it's an important topic, and I hate to give it a short shrift tonight. So maybe we can have a more meaningful discussion when we have more time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Absolutely not.
All right, Carolyn, we'll be right back, and we'll talk about the accounting contract.
Was that clear on that one? IT, cemeteries, I'm a girl, but not for the council.
Carolyn, you're on page 11.
Yes, whoops, about a couple months ago, at their foundation, the Select Board, we advertised for the position of accountant to see if there was anybody who was out there who could really walk into the job, who wanted to look at both options. We had been very satisfied with Melanson, but we wanted to just see what was out there. So although we had applicants, there was no one that could walk into a municipal position. Those qualifications weren't there, and that's critical. So Lori is here. She was here. Okay.
He's here.
I am here.
Lori's here. So I had, I did, Jennifer uploaded the contracts to it, so you had a chance to see it again. So she has the most recent contract available for this to look at, and to also ask any questions right now.
Just a couple of questions. Lori, just one of the things I was wondering is, obviously the contract's based on your estimation of a certain number of hours? Or is it based on committed and dedicated hours to the town of Hadley? And how do, how did you arrive at the contract?
Um, I honestly, I didn't come up with the price. So I'm not sure how they calculated that. But we have a, you know, a year of history or so. So last year, the contract was $88,000. This year, it's 90. I, I wasn't prepared to answer the number of hours that we spend on Hadley. I could certainly get that for you, but it's not based on the number of hours, it's just on the job. You know, whatever it takes to get the job done.
And did the contract, and maybe I missed it, but I was just looking for a lot of times during the agenda that will say that there's a commitment to either be on site a certain number of hours a week or turnaround times, like all of those things?
We're on, yeah, we're on site once a month. And that's, I believe that, that should be on the contract. Yep, monthly visits.
Monthly on-site. Is that really off of that?
That's a question for you guys. I mean, we're, we're doing it.
Well.
Linda needs to answer that.
Yeah, actually, there's, it's once a month for the regular, for, for being on-site for department heads and all. But that's in addition to, you come to town meetings and you'll appear at audits, various, various other things that you do for us. So this is just a, it's once a month for a regular onsite visit.
Right, right. We do 99% of our work remotely. So when I'm there at Town Hall, that's like to meet with everybody, to have meetings all day, and yeah. That's just like additional.
Is that enough time, Linda?
Well, I, I, it's, I don't wait for that day. I'm on the phone with them a lot, actually. I deal with accountants regularly. They're always available by phone, not just to me. So they're available for department heads. And we, we have a lot of regular contact, contact. So I'm not as, I'm not familiar, maybe Carolyn's heard from department heads, but it, it works for me. I know that we really like having them there. It was great to have, you know, you know, I, I'd love to have Mary once a month and you once a month, Lori. That would be my ideal, is have each of you, so that would be twice a month, because we, sometimes we have to choose between you, and we really have different things that we work with, with, with both of you. But, but they're, you know, we, they're available by, by phone or Zoom or conference call.
How about you, Mel?
And Lori, please, I mean, everything I've heard, you know, from the staff and the town administrator, sounds like everybody's really pleased with the work that Melanson Heath is doing. I think I'm just asking questions from a contract standpoint, and I realize now it's probably not fair to ask you those questions, it's probably too.
That's okay.
Is Tanya still the lead on this, or?
She is, yep, yep.
About how that, I just want to better understand how the $90,000 contract is put together.
Okay.
Great to ask you, so my apologies.
That's okay, that's okay. We can get that information for you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do you want to add questions? Do you want to add to this?
And how time-sensitive this, I don't want to go without a contract with Melanson Heath, so.
And Lori, Lori, it seems like you're giving the impression that it's gonna be July, if it's not a contract, June 3rd.
Well, as Lori promises not to lock the door, maybe we. Lock the door.
No.
Those questions are not gonna quit.
Yeah.
13th, which y'all already be here for, so that'll work? Where are you not?
This will be quick. We went out, giving requests for proposals. Have we, did it, have we requested the same amount? I'm trying to think how many requests.
We actually, we received, I believe, six requests for general, but only five for labor.
Okay. What came back was the, so if you remember, just to summarize, we had had one firm for about 20 years. This is the first time we've been out to get, I think, in that amount in that timeframe. And we were in agreement to do general as well as labor to second. So we had, we have three firms that replied for labor. We have two that replied for general. And I'd like to give to you, when you have the proposals, they are, I repeat, these are very, very good firms. But if you could, I, I, I'd leave it to you, how do you decide where to move forward? I would say, do you have any firms?
Carolyn, I, I think this is great, that we've gotten responses. And I would definitely recommend that we bring firms in for an interview before awarding, if that is, works for you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap her such as coffee. If y'all are okay with that, then Carolyn and I will work on reaching out to y'all and the firms to see when will be good to have them. I do know that Carolyn had a conversation with KT Law. And since we don't carry a contract with our legal counsel, they have affirmed that they will continue to represent the town of Hadley until the time that we're ready to transition to new counsel. So if that's okay with everybody? Okay, so I'll, I'll make, I will praise Carolyn of the rest of the conversation, okay? July? Okay, if we do it, if we could do that before then, would that be acceptable as well? Okay, because we were thinking we might try to move it a little quicker. I, I don't want to say that, but perhaps, and maybe over Zoom during the day or something like that. And, and, but I'll, I'll work with Carolyn and we'll be in touch with y'all to make sure that we have it set up appropriately, what works best for everyone. Okay, all right.
With your other business, the town administrator's report, we basically end of year cleanup and contracts, so you've already heard all of that from her, the very announcements.
I had a couple of announcements. On the happy side, we have Mr. Thomas Zusto. And he is a 20 acres farm. He has been there for 57 years, started his business, and is turned 90 years old today. And he works every day still, so on that tractor, he's in the greenhouses. So much happy birthday, Tom. Have many more, still love, and away you go. Sad note, we have two condolences this evening, one of Robert Obufah. He was the fire manager for Lululeta Fire with the house. Took a lot of pride in his Swiss Cow Association, was president of the Swiss Cow Association. So condolences to his children, Sean worked on the farm with them, his family there. And he has a son, Roger, and I'm sorry, I'm some, condolences to his family. condolences to Greg, Misses family, Greg, a long time, I want to say 40 years, on the Board of, on the Board of Health. He did most of the Title V applications. And he's just been a quiet guy. They ran fish farming potatoes, and packing company for quite a number of years. Grand condolences to Leslie and his three children.
I also have two condolences for Ruth Moore, the loss of her husband, Wendy. They were active here at the Senior Center. And on the good news, in Yankee Magazine, Maple Valley. And on the good news, in Yankee Magazine, Maple Valley Creamery, the soup made, was voted, they made the best ice cream in New England on a list of 36.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, great people to tell, that's great.
I think the taco truck there is quite amazing, too.
Randy, Amy, anything new?
Nope.
I'm good, thank you.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Amy.
Rogue call vote, Devin Smith?
Yes.
Chonggol?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you all, have a good night.
You too, thank you.